Five, six o'clock. I'd like to call March fourth, 2025, those board meetings to order. Trustee Shomis, please.
Sure. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, sir. Tracy is absent this evening, so Scott is our clerk, so roll call, please, Scott.
President Conant?
Here.
Trustee Michaels?
Here.
Trustee White?
Here.
Trustee Lindy?
Yeah.
Trustee Heron?
Here.
Trustee Bondi?
Here.
Trustee Shomis?
Was that here? Okay. We got a call, thank you. Nothing under public hearing this evening and nothing under appointments and visitations. Item six, airport report, Tony.
No report tonight, thank you.
Thank you, sir. No meeting?
No.
Okay. Up next, we have public comment on items that are particularly scheduled for action. So, under consent agenda this evening, we have A, approval of the February eighteenth, 2025, those board meeting minutes; Item B, approval of the vouchers; Item C, an ordinance, amended title on chapter fourteen, section seventy, administrative adjudication; Item D, a resolution approving number of liquor license for two thousand and twenty-four to two thousand and twenty-five; Item E, approval of the liquor license, for on-premise liquor license for Route Forty-seven, Wayzoo Tavern, located at five nineteen Sugar Grove Parkway in the D Sugar Grove. Also this evening, under general business, we have item A, a resolution for the fiscal year 2025, 2026, MFT expenditure authorization. At this time, under public comment, those are the items that we're taking public comment on, so if you have a comment on any of the items we'll be voting on this evening, which are those items, will take your public comments. So I'll just go through the list that I have. Lou?
Not them.
Okay. Brad? Public comment for this particular item? No? Marion?
Yes.
For any of those items we're taking action on, or just the next public comment?
I would believe that that would be the next public comment. I'm not sure exactly what the ordinance is for, amended title, I don't know exactly what that is.
Okay. Are you a Lennar folk? Or no?
Well, yeah, we're regarding the subdivision.
Okay. So, that would be, that public comment is going to be item ten on our agenda? Okay. I'm sorry, I can't read it, but a three oh five Hampton. Everybody here on the list then, who I have Somerset Hampton, you're all in Windsor Point, you want to make a public comment regarding the Lennar project?
Correct.
Okay. That's item ten. So, anything under consent agenda this time, or item nine, which is general business, any of those items I just spread off? If you have a public comment, you have the floor for three minutes. Going once, going twice, okay, three times we'll close that portion. Okay. Up next, consent agenda. Any requests for a Lennar item? Hearing none, can I get a motion to approve the consent agenda as previously stated?
Served.
Second.
I am first, out of trustee Shomis, the second out of trustee Heron. Roll call, please, Scott.
Trustee Shomis?
Aye.
Trustee Heron?
Aye.
Trustee Michaels?
Aye.
Trustee White?
Aye.
Trustee Lindy?
Aye.
Trustee Bondi?
Aye.
Thank you, motion carries. Up next, general business, resolution of the twenty-five, twenty-six MFT expenditure authorization, Brad.
This is basically just housekeeping, something we do annually too, we spend more field tax funds for the Sugar Grove program. So we have to pass a resolution by now to do so.
Any questions for Brad?
So moved. Second.
First, out of trustee White, second out of trustee Heron. Roll call, please.
Trustee White?
Aye.
Trustee Heron?
Aye.
Trustee Michaels?
Aye.
Trustee Lindy?
Aye.
Trustee Bondi?
Aye.
Trustee Shomis?
Aye.
Thank you. Motion carries, sir. Up next, we have public comment, so this is item ten already. Also on our agenda this evening, we have a few other items that we'll be discussing. One is item A, a special use permit for Truvet. Item B, the final plan of subdivision, lot sixty-six, or avenue sixty-six and sixty-eight on Wheel Street for Nash. Item C, a priority capital projects list. Item D, the fiscal year twenty-six through twenty thirty, capital improvement program. Item E, the twenty-five through twenty-six budget workshop number two. So those are the other items the board will be discussing this evening, so if you can have a public comment on any and all items, of course, but you can be free to discuss one or, but also those items in particular, if you would like to address. So we'll start left of the list.
President Conant, trustees, staff. I'm not going to give my usual disclaimer tonight, because I'm not speaking on my own behalf tonight. Tonight I am speaking in my capacity as president of the Windsor Point Homeowners Association. I wanted to give you a heads up on some of the concerns I've been hearing about the Lennar subdivision that's going with Nextdoor. So first of all, I want to say, most of the feedback I'm getting has been really, really positive. In fact, I've got one resident whose daughter is already pestering folks over at Lennar trying to reserve a lot. So that's really good. But one issue that keeps coming up, and I'm worried it's going to snowball, we're going to get in front of it now, is traffic. Specifically, I'm talking about traffic on Hampton Road, which is what would connect Windsor Point to Brighton Ridge, and the subsequent increase in traffic on Regency and Park. The fear is that residents of the Brighton Ridge subdivision are going to use these roads to cut through Windsor Point to get to Bliss Road, to get to McDonald's, to get to Coldstone, whatever. And I have to admit, looking at the way it's laid out, if I lived in Brighton Ridge, that is exactly what I would do to get to those locations. I wouldn't go out to Galena to get to McDonald's. So, given that, plus the issues that we already have with through traffic speeding on Regency and speeding on Park, I think our residents' concerns are very well founded. So I'm going to ask two things of you tonight, of all of you. So first, I would ask that you start thinking now, coming up with ideas now, on how to improve the safety of Park and Regency. That might be lowering the speed limit to twenty-five miles an hour, that might be putting a permanent speed cam up, it could be any number of things, but I'd like you to start thinking about it now. I'd also ask that you start thinking about ways to discourage through traffic on Hampton Road. I know things like speed bumps and speed tables are problematic, so we're probably going to need to get creative. Maybe a roundabout, and what Lennar is calling Road E, where it intersects Hampton would help. Maybe making some of those roads one-way street would help. I don't know, this isn't my area of expertise, but I would ask that you look into it now. Now, when I say all of you, I do mean all of you. If you haven't already, trustees, I would ask that you start thinking about these things now, and coming up with feedback now, early in the process. And President Conant, if you have this on so already, I'd ask that you start looking into this, and direct staff to start looking into it as well. Because I know Lennar has a very aggressive timetable, and the sooner we can get these issues addressed, the more likely it is they'll be able to keep that aggressive timeframe. So, if we can get this stuff taken care of now, then when this does come before the board for a vote, then maybe the only thing we need to do is sit back and flog. So, thank you very much for the consideration.
Thank you. Okay. Up next, Brad.
I'm going to represent your bed.
Okay, 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 I'm sorry. Marion?
I think Mark should go first.
That's fine.
I'm just going to feedback on what was already said. My name is Mark Strasser, I've lived in Sugar Grove for thirteen years, first six years in townhomes, and then the last seven years at three eleven Hampton with my fiancee Maria. And we are just east of the farmland, so we've enjoyed a very quiet neighborhood, beautiful sunrises. We knew when we moved in that that someday that would finally come to an end, and it appears that it's closer than it is. But we just don't want the development to jeopardize the safety of the Windsor Point, and especially Hampton Road where we're at. I did some research and found that the average thoroughfare in a subdivision is thirty to forty feet. When you measure Park, Regency is thirty-six from asphalt to asphalt. And Hampton is only twenty-five feet, and with cars parking on the street, that makes it nineteen feet, and that's just, that's very less than the thirty-six that Regency and Park has. Since there's only two access points to this new subdivision, like he said, there's going to be a lot of traffic coming down Hampton, and we just want to make sure that the safety and the concern of those people who live there, plus the additional traffic on Regency and Park, is taken into account. That's all we got.
Thank you, sir.
Hello, everybody. My name is Mary Croft. I live at Fiona Hampton, Mark is one of my neighbors. Thank you for being here today. Please give me some grace, because I've never done this before, all right? I wrote out my presentation just so that I don't miss anything, okay? So we are here to discuss a very serious issue, trust. The current development plan for Brighton Ridge does not adequately address the safety needs of Windsor Point. If this plan moves forward as proposed, it will create significant safety risks for both residents and motorists. So fire code and access point. According to a Sugar Grove zoning committee member, Brighton Ridge is large enough that it requires two access points. One access point is Galena, and the other is Hampton Road. At first glance, this may not seem like it's a concern. After all, Hampton Road was always planned to be a connecting, a connection to the new development. However, what's critical to understand is that Hampton was designed as a through street, not a primary access point. Hampton is a small neighborhood road, not built to handle heavy traffic. It is too narrow to safely accommodate additional volume of cars, and the safety of one subdivision should not come at the expense of another. Should not come at the expense of another. Regarding the flawed traffic study and the questionable data, the developer Leonard has submitted a traffic study to the village. However, this study is incomplete and misleading. The study was conducted in July, when school is out, so it does not accurately reflect peak traffic patterns. It fails to also mention the fatal crash that was at Regency and Galena recently, not recently, in the last six months, within the last few years, right? There have also been numerous accidents that have occurred at Park and Forty-seven, and there have been requests to get a light there, and that has not happened either. So, we have to focus on, Leonard's priority is profit, not community safety. Once Brighton Ridge is built, they will leave, and we will be the ones left dealing with the consequences of the development, right? So, how will Brighton Ridge traffic impact Windsor Point? I live just two houses from the development, and I can tell you firsthand that when I drive, ninety, ninety-five percent of the time when I'm going to the businesses on Galena and Forty-seven, I use Regency and Park, not Galena. One hundred percent of the time when I'm going north on Forty-seventh, so that's going to the middle school, the high school, everything in Sugar Grove is east, no, west. So everyone's going to go in that direction, right? Unless they're going to work, which is east. But everything else is in that direction. So a hundred percent of the time I'm going north on Forty-seven, I take Regency and Park, not Galena. And any trip to Batavia, Geneva, St. Charles, or Elgin, I take Regency and Park to Capital, not Galena, so I can get to Bliss. Now, ask yourself, how do you think Brighton Ridge residents will use Windsor Point roads? I'll tell you. They'll use them very often. Why? Because it's the more convenient route. So, moving on, existing traffic issues will also get worse, as Louis has already...
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I was listening very intently, so I apologize, but...
I move to a lot more time.
Thank you.
We've got to do it fairly, so what I'm going to do, if you want to do that, if anybody else wants to speak outside for three minutes, we're going to bring them back.
I wonder if he's finished.
Yeah, okay.
Okay. Sorry, where was I? So, Louis just recently presented a proposal of additional traffic control measures under Regency and Park due to ongoing traffic struggles currently in Windsor Point, and that we've had those for the last twenty years, so they're not just magically going to go away. Now imagine adding at least six hundred plus vehicles, because it's over three hundred and twenty-five homes, at least two vehicles per home. That's a lot of cars going through our subdivision and on our city streets. If motorists are already speeding through our subdivision, simply reducing the speed won't solve the problem. Morning rush hour is a problem. Right now, it's already difficult to turn left out of Windsor Point during the morning rush. There's usually a four to five car backup waiting to exit. Adding another subdivision with just one main access point will make it even worse. It will be harder to leave for work in the morning, guaranteed. Regarding child safety risk, Windsor Point is home to many young children who play outside. Adding six hundred plus vehicles to our roads will make it more dangerous for them, whether they're playing at home, walking through the neighborhood, or heading to the park on Hampton. Hampton Road is a poor choice for a primary access point. As Mark just discussed, Hampton Road is too narrow to handle the increased traffic. Picture this: Cars parked on one side of the road, two-way traffic trying to pass, and an Amazon truck or a UPS truck, mail truck, trying to deliver at the same time. Does this sound safe? No. Is this exaggerated? Absolutely not. This is already happening on Regency and Park, except those roads are wider, and they can handle it, they have the ability to maneuver, because the roads are wider. Our request to the village board is, let me be crystal clear, we support the development of the land, but we do not support the current development plan. We are asking the board to go back to Leonard and challenge their proposals, ensure the proper traffic studies are conducted, and we work the design to that Hampton Road is a through street and not a primary access point. My final thought, we all want growth, but it has to be safe, it has to be responsible and well-planned. Let's work together to protect our neighborhood and ensure the traffic safety, and ensure traffic safety, and hold Leonard accountable. Thank you for your time, and I appreciate you giving me extra time to present my ideas, so thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Is it, I'm sorry, little bit, three oh five Hampton?
Marina, yeah.
Oh, sorry. What's your first name?
Marina.
Marina, okay.
Marina Klavik.
Okay.
And first of all, I'm going to say, English is not my first language, I'm going to try my best, okay? So, we had, in just four days, we requested that people to, like, say they agree or disagree, or if they have any concerns. Thirty-five people signed petition, and I'm going to share some of the comments or concerns that they shared with us. Some of them were, like, saying that Windsor Point should not be negatively impacted by Brighton Ridge, but also, like, add more people to the community without affecting us negatively. Design or redesign the new subdivision with an additional entrance that doesn't connect it to Windsor Point is one of the petitions. Please add a second entrance to that subdivision. I'm concerned, another neighbor mentioned about the negative impact this might have on our neighborhood. Other neighbors said, I would like to ask the village to insist that the developer create an alternate option for a second access to the new subdivision rather than through Windsor Point. I am very concerned about the additional traffic that the proposed Hampton Road connection will bring to my subdivision. There is already an issue with cars speeding down, Regency frequently, which I believe will be exacerbated, sorry, with the new connecting subdivision. There are also bus stops at Regency and Hampton, and I'm concerned about the safety of these kids with the additional traffic at that intersection. Actually, my son is one of them that is in that corner all the time, and it's kind of scary for me to think that we're going to have more traffic in rush hour in the morning, or when the kids come back from school. I moved in, my home in East Park, when the house was built in two thousand and two. Car avenue has always been terrible with cars speeding up and down, cutting through the subdivision. I never felt, my three children were safe out front as I raised them. I can live with the new section being added east of our subdivision, this is going to get much worse. Multiple stop signs should be put in place along Park Avenue at intersecting streets, that was another neighbor. Somebody else said again, we hope a second entrance to access to the new subdivision is created. Traffic will be increased, and it could become a safety issue. Our road just got resurfaced a couple of years ago, and construction traffic, extraregional traffic. An obvious increase of delivery truck in Hampton Road is going to affect the community. Many are pretty much saying the same. Increased traffic on Park and other main street will cause even more accidents. We had some happening. Requested option one would be my biggest concern, new subdivision should not be such a negative impact to the existing subdivision. We go to the same thing. We don't have a very large road in Hampton, and that little bit is going to be like, kind of, I don't know, funnel in that section, which is very concerning. For safety reasons, Regency Hampton should not be an entrance for new construction, the road is not big enough to be an entrance. It would be better if a second entrance somewhere else. It will differently make this a dangerous addition for the existing subdivision, it's surely not something this area needs. Everybody agrees to the same thing, and somebody said, I'm afraid a comment on Regency and Park will become a raceway.
Thank you.
You did great. Thank you. Eileen?
Hi, I'm Eileen Isles. I, my husband and I own the home at Somerset Hampton, and I don't have a prepared presentation, I'm here to support my neighbors here. But I do want to say just a couple of things. The, I've lived here since two thousand and two, we've overlooked that farm, we love it, yes, but we've always understood that it was going to be sold at one point. The town would grow, absolutely, and there'd be something there, likely a home, so we've always understood that. So it's not that we don't, we do support the homes and the growth there with the Brighton Ridge subdivision, but we are very concerned about the traffic, and it is all about traffic and safety for us. Because we, as ladies have mentioned, we have our challenges already, and the thought of, the plan is to put in three hundred and fifty-plus homes, which we believe will bring, you know, two cars a home, at least, seven hundred plus cars or vehicles on the road, and with only one access point being Galena, and then the second one being Hampton. Hampton's not even a thoroughfare, and it was never meant to carry that kind of load, that we believe, from what we see and where we live there. So I really, you know, we are asking for the board to consider an independent study, an independent traffic study, that is really perhaps more comprehensive, also does a study at a time of day that is, has traffic, has more traffic during the time of year, you know, that has traffic, so that we feel like we're getting a better study to begin with, and really relook at the plans in terms of having that one access point to Galena. Perhaps there's another access point that can actually be built, and then with Hampton wouldn't be carrying that load. Because with that many cars coming into our subdivision, and think about it, it's really kind of developed, it's doubling our traffic, right? Because they're almost as big, Brighton Ridge will be almost as big as Windsor Point. And today, Windsor Point does have five access points, even with all everything we just described, we have our own traffic issues already. So we want to make sure we're thinking ahead and planning ahead for this significant, what we view as very significant volume coming into our development. So, we would like to have continued conversation, we would like to be, to help present more ideas, and we very much welcome it, so we do support the development. But, right now, we are very concerned, and as she, as Merda mentioned, you know, in four days is all, we have thirty-five signed petitions. So, in our area, we have a lot of very concerned neighbors, so we really just want to express that to you all. So, thank you.
Thank you. Renata?
So, I won't repeat everything, but I guess just along the lines of safety, I think everyone here can say, like, as we've driven down Regency Park, we've had moments where you see, because we have a ton of kids in the neighborhood, and you see the kid on their bike, like, start to pass and zoom, and the car's going fast, and you, like, hold your breath and, like, want to yell, but, I mean, there's been, I can name at least three times recently where I've seen this. So, adding more cars to that, just from a safety aspect, really scares me, and you see kids on the sidewalks playing. Everyone's kind of outlined everything, but I just wanted to bring some examples, and I think all of us from our neighborhoods have had that moment where you see it, and bringing more traffic in for those moments to happen more often makes it more likely accidents for a lot.
Thanks. Thank you. Okay. That concludes my list, but does anyone else have a public comment at this time? Going once, going twice, three times we'll close public comment. Just for your peace of mind and understanding, I'm going to have chief comment in second place on our conversation today. But, Lennar has moved, they were supposed to be tonight, they moved to the eighteenth village board meeting for discussion, and that is not for vote, so that is discussion. We will have a more in-depth discussion on the eighteenth of March with Lennar and their folks here, as well as our engineers. So, I'm grateful that you came and provided feedback today, so we can do some behind-the-scenes due diligence before that presentation. But I just want you to know that we did talk to chief, so one of those things in particular today was safety, not only in your subdivision, but knowing that this project is coming, the safety village-wide. I have a goal of twenty-five miles an hour on every subdivision, is my goal. So, I don't know if you want to comment on some of the things that you'll be doing for safety improvements in the subdivision.
Sure. So, we currently have a couple of traffic studies going on to do with the woods right now, and then we'll do an additional one movement across. We'll take it over to Windsor Point, and then we have a couple other subdivisions that we're looking at. We're trying to reduce the residential speed area down to twenty-five miles per hour in all the neighborhoods, the main streets, the regular, you know, your Galenas, your Route Forty-seven, and Bliss will remain the same, can't change those. What we're looking at, the warrants that we're looking at, reducing the speed limits down, so to make it a little bit more safer. The village has been very generous and allowed the police department to purchase additional speed trailers signage, and we have a couple of stop signs that we're putting up, just to educate the public of what their speeds are, because sometimes when they're driving, they're not paying attention to their speed, and then we'll also do some enforcement, do some education and enforcement, so...
Can you speak just to the stop sign situation too, because that comes up as what your role is and how you look at whether a stop sign can be added or not added?
So, in those...
After just some...
So, typically, a stop sign just can't be erected by a village by itself alone, without some other, meeting some other criteria. We're very fortunate with working with our in-house village engineer, who's present also, there's material that has the meat warrants and can move it forward. So, there are other opportunities, instead of stop signs, to yield signs, just to flow in traffic. And also, it does have to do with the width of roadway, so if it's super wide, yeah, people seem to realize, typical roads that are a little bit wider have more speed on, that's just because of their vision. So when it's narrower and you have cars parked on one side of it, we typically don't see the speeds as much on the wider roads.
I didn't want you to feel like you came because you were playing Lennar tonight, so that's why we kind of had him discuss it. This, like I said, will be back on the eighteenth. I encourage you to stay involved, and, like I said, we'll do our due diligence and take up some of your comments that you made tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you. So up next, under discussion, we have item A, the special use permit for Truvet. I'm sorry. Did I go one, twice, or three times on public comment? Did anybody else come? I'm sorry. Okay. Thank you.
The village has received a special use permit for a veterinary clinic that is wishing to locate in the five nineteen building in Sugar Grove Center. So it's the new building that cilantro and Subway is in, they're looking to occupy two of the remaining spaces and finish them out. The required public hearing was held with the plan commission on February nineteenth. The only external improvement that they are going, which requesting to make to the building, would be to add a small pet relief area out in the rear of the building. This is because there will be times when they will have pets there that have to stay there for overnight possibly, when they have surgeries, so they need a place to be able to take the pets out. The plan commission discussed the proposal at the plan commission meeting, and overall did not have any concerns with the proposed use. They did discuss the fence around the pet relief area and added a condition of their approval that the fence has to match the color of the building. Color of the fence has to match the color of the building. Staff is requesting that the village board discuss the proposal tonight and provide us with direction on preparing the needed ordinance for approval. And staff does recommend approval of this special use permit. And the applicants are here, if you guys have any questions.
Wonderful. Thank you. Any questions for the meeting?
You had no comments about the adjacent tenants from the...
They did not give us, they did not show up and have any comments, I never received any comments, so I would assume they're fine with it. They did receive notifications in the mail as required, so...
And also for the record, the adjacent tenants are also the property owners, and they are leasing the space. Okay. So, let's go.
I just want to make sure, I guess the other question I would add is, is there any additional soundproofing that would be done between the demising walls?
The architect is here, he'll probably speak on that a little bit further.
Hi, how you doing? My name is Brett Heffner, I'm representing the architect and builder for the project, Art of Beauty. Currently, there are no plans for additional soundproofing to be installed. You know, there are, there are demising walls between each of the spaces, which are, you know, full height walls, and those are fully... You know, we don't want our neighbors complaining every day. Just, yeah, same for us, so, so yeah, we'll definitely be thinking about it. You know, there is, we do try to divide some of the interior walls as well, to help basically separate some of those interior spaces, and just make them quiet and help, help control some of those noises coming from like the back of the house into the front areas, so. There are considerations for that, as well as, you know, acoustic ceilings, you know, as well as, you know, it's, some areas we might do sound baths on top... on top of the ceilings to help control sounds, especially like office spaces.
Yeah, you can get some of the, let's just do ceiling, three Y S T C rooms.
Yeah, yeah, exactly.
What kind of fence would be for?
It would be like a vinyl privacy fence. It would be about six feet tall. There won't be any like vision through it because we just, we want to make sure that animals are very safe. You know, client, as well as our staff is very safe as well.
Did I see something? Something wooden around or...
There, yeah, there's like a little like wood trim around the corner. So like, let's say a dog somehow escaped, they wouldn't be able to break through and get out of it. That's, yeah. That's usually more for like when they're two adjacent, you know, two adjacent playyards or something next to each other for dogs, like not scratching each other's noses and things like that. But just general, general good construction.
This is Dr. Keith Tru.
Yeah. I don't worry. Yeah, the, the, all the, student, underneath the fence and everything that you were mentioning, those animals will all be leashed winter in the yard and everything too. So they won't be left unattended or anything. So that's for safety regardless, because you never know even six foot fence. You never know it sometimes, so they'll, they'll not be, they'll be monitored at all times.
The animals that are staying there are ones that are going through a medical procedure, correct? And you're not boarding the animals, that's correct. You know, they're recovering from an injury or something like that.
Correct. It'd be very, very rare for them to stay overnight, you know, that's only in like emergency situations.
How, how many do you think you'd be, you'd be housing at any point in time? How many cages, crates, whatever?
During the day, we have planned out for about twenty places for animals to stay, but that's just for during the day. It wouldn't be for overnight or boarding. It'd be for animals that are staying for treatment for the day or surgery for the day. So then we've got sort of that three different cage banked areas that that would be.
Okay. The relief area, how many of those things can start being pretty complex over time? What is the material on the surface being made out of some? What's being done to wash, wash that off? I've got to think the odors, potentially the odors to the adjacent outdoor eating area might, might be an issue. Is it any worse than the garbage cans that are being bagged?
No, I don't know. No, it's definitely a big concern for us too. So we're going to remove a portion of the asphalt and replace it with like gravel base. And then you have a perfect turf on the top of that. It's basically a synthetic turf. You know, there'll be constant maintenance for it, like as in washing it down. You know, we definitely won't allow, you know, feces to stay on top of the turf for, for any extended period of time. You know, we bag and throw that away instantly. Because, yeah, we don't want cross contamination between our animals and we want our staff to be happy and healthy as well.
Is there a spigot in the back of the building for runs down?
We are adding one, yes.
Okay.
We've had these in our hospital, in hospitals I've been with before and...
Oh, I've seen them all over the place, but not next door to restaurants.
We had inside, actually, like an interior overhang, so.
Sure.
And so, I mean, the odors really had only escaped at the one access, or excuse me, exit point. And it was cleaned every day and we never had any issues with, with odor at the previous hospital.
And we're not, we're not close at all to the adjacent outdoor seating areas too.
You're pretty close when the wind blows, I guess.
Yeah. Usually one of our, usually one of our big questions is around like, how do you handle, you know, the, the waste and like pick up? Because again, it's like throwing, throwing that away in, you know, that is a concern. But again, it's like, we don't want our staff to be complaining about the smell as well as our neighbors. So, yeah, we're very conscious of it.
God forbid something awful happens during a medical procedure. What sort of process you guys need to, need to go through for disposal of an animal cadaver? Try to be delicate in my wording.
No, no, that's, I mean, regardless, that's going to happen, you know, whenever we do euthanases or anything that happens. They, we have companies that come in to pick up those animals for cremation, so.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, so there, there's a, a...
A small chest freezer?
A small chest freezer that we use to, so that you don't get any of the odors. And then a cremation company will come and take care of those.
Do you get first, third vet in town or the second vet in town?
Second. Second.
Okay.
It makes me sad to think that when my dog's passed the vet's attention, what happened to my vet? I just think I'm going to be back in a box.
Wait, vet's make that all transparent, you don't even know. The fairies come back.
But to your point about the legal batter, they make a, I mean, animals like to eat other dogs' poop, so that's, they want to pick it up for that.
Exactly. It'll be picked up immediately after because you won't have other dogs.
Yeah, yeah, it's just the odor can stick around in some of those things. I appreciate the, you know, the plastic turf and that sort of stuff. I'm thinking for the neighbors that aren't too far behind, you know, they're in the one end of Windsor Point, they just left. But, you know, again, there's two outdoor eating spaces there on the bookend of the strip mall.
By no means is this like an outdoor like playground, right? Like, it looks to be a one dog at a time type of thing, so.
Okay.
Yeah, very controlled.
It doesn't look very big.
No, no, I don't.
Not an animal one.
Thank you, Justin Shaw. Do we have any other questions?
Yes, I do.
Thank you.
So you're talking about the disposal of waste. It's great picking it right up, but where, where is it going to go after that? Do the dumpsters go in back of the restaurants?
Correct. It'll, it'll be bags in, in our own bags and then, and then taken out to the dumpster. So it's not like individual, like, you know, doggy bags, it'll be within the...
Right, so it'll be sitting in the dumpster behind the restaurants.
Correct.
Are you guys looking at additional pickups during the week with a garbage company? I think that the smell of this, of the dog waste in a hot dumpster over the summer in the back of the restaurants is not an acceptable.
Yeah, they, they usually will have multiple pickups a week because of that and just based off of what we would normally have. Not just in the sense of pet waste, but in all of the packaging we get our stuff in and everything else that's associated with running the practice. So there will be more frequent trash pickup because of that.
That's fine, brings me to the other waste of just the blood and packaging of bandages and things like that. That's all of them go. Do you have, are you sharing a dumpster or you have in your own that can be shut and locked or kept cleaner than the other? I'm concerned about, I'm concerned about some of these, about the waste that you're going to produce there.
Yeah, we would, we would have our own, the, the plan right now is to have our own dumpster. We don't look for that, yes.
And then you already spoke with the chest freezer that's located outside or inside?
Inside.
Inside.
Anything additional?
No, that's open now.
Thank you. Any other trustee have a question?
What zoning is a veterinary clinic typically love?
It's typically a straight permitted use. However, the Jules, Jules PD says it needs to be a special use, is why they have to come before.
Didn't Jules sign off on that?
Anything else to give? Okay.
I got a kid that's looking to go into animal study. I kid you not, so the opportunity just might...
They'll meet you after in the hallway.
As a parent, making sure we've got employment opportunities for their children.
Employment volunteer, shadowing, all of that is something that we've always been, your passion about.
Awesome. Like additional opportunity in the village, potentially.
Good question. How many vets will you have?
We'll start off with, because we're going to be seven days a week, we'll start off with three. But hopefully we'll grow from there.
Wonderful. Thank you. It sounds like a positive experience here in Sugar Grove. Looking forward to this coming back next meeting. Do I have any, anyone, so you could, we could bring it back up and say?
Sure.
Okay?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay, up next, final flat subdivision, the sixty-six and sixty-eight Mill Street.
We have received an application from the owners of sixty-six, sixty-eight Mill Street to subdivide their property into two separate parcels. Currently, it is one parcel with a duplex. They are wishing to subdivide the property so they could possibly sell off one side of the duplex and it be its own separate lot. We did hold a required public hearing with the Plan Commission. Overall, they were good with the petition. However, they did add the condition that the duplexes must maintain a facade in identical appearance and any change in the exterior appearance of either unit is subject to Village Board approval, review and approval. They feel they have concerns about one side of the duplex being a different color and the building materials changing. We also made a condition that the publisher must install a second buffalo box on the property or any other needed utilities as deemed necessary by the village engineer in order to have two separate units. Okay. Staff is recommending approval with the listed conditions. And we are looking for direction and discussion on that steps.
Thank you.
And, yeah, if there are any questions.
Okay. Thank you. For discussion or questions?
Kind of question whether we can put a condition on subdivision or variance that are the, the appearance, you know? I mean, appearance obviously is somewhat of a touchy subject because it relates to land use control issue. If it is reasonably related to variance, the subdivision I would not recommend. But the variance, I think we have a little bit more to wait and truly agree with regards to that. But no, I, I agree. I think the unified mechanical appearance and avoiding any monotony is what we're trying to look for, et cetera.
That's right.
And I think appearance like that would be okay. But not, not in divisions, I mean, for personal subdivisions. Obviously, that's just splitting on properties relative to the tax assessment and such. But if it relates to a variance, as long as it's reasonably related, I think I'm for approval.
Is it, is it a solid roof or is it a divided roof?
One roof.
One roof.
And I forgot to mention as part of their request, they are requesting two variations, two variances to the subdivision flat. Because when you subdivide the property, they don't meet our village code standards as far as the width, a minimum width of the lot. And then the note of experience, I heard setbacks in the middle are zero because it's a duplex going over, so they need variance for both of those ones.
Okay. So what is the, the village, the minimum is fifty? Frontage and these are forty-six and forty-seven?
Yeah, they're not far off it. And there are several other lots along Meadows that are the same situation. Their duplexes are the divided lot, standing over the lot line with smaller lot widths that are similar, even smaller than these that they're proposing.
No, it's approved when they plan the subdivision?
Yes.
Okay. So there's history, prior history doing, doing things like this?
Yes.
But to your question, Trustee White, the, the means for enforcing the uniformity between that area, how, how is that controlled? In my experience, right, I'm just a dumb homeowner, is you control that through homeowners association typically, right?
Go ahead, yeah.
Thank you, Mad President. Trustee, I may write it down, Trustee White, but I can answer that too.
I would prefer.
Of course. So no, I am just a dumb owner, so as a dumb homeowner, which I don't think you are in any way. Yes, it's too bad. I just need to know everybody. The, the body of laws relative to CCRs and homeowners associations is a civil action that gets brought by the homeowners association. If there was a violation of our zoning code or conditions, which would then become part of zoning ordinance, that would be enforced through the village itself. So it's just very similarly related, they're both related to how one uses their property. One is from, you make an agreement to live in this homeowners association, these are the rules that we go in there.
Yeah.
And on this one, if, if someone doesn't adhere to the conditions or the regulations in the ordinance or the village code relative to the zoning, then they would be cited just like any other zoning citation. And I assume that'd be the exact same answer that Trustee White would give.
Well, actually, I, I mean, I, I looked at something like this and I think, okay, so, and I'm not against it at all. But the thing that, about having that extra condition is, so if one side has a fire and the insurance company comes in and they say, okay, well, we're going to redo the siding. No, that siding is no longer available. We're going to redo the roof, that roof is no longer available. And so you're automatically going to have things that are not identical. And it can't be without the other owner having to redo something that they don't have to normally do. And that's, that's, I'm just wondering if they could do some sort of a party law agreement or something or, you know, maybe divide that stuff up and make sure that they're covering that kind of situation.
How do we enforce it with the other, if we've done it in other homeside, same street? How, how do we downplay that?
We have, we don't have this condition on the other homes. In the other homes I'm referring to are the duplexes on Meadows. So it's on the other side of forty-seven.
Okay.
And I don't believe there's that condition on these. This is just something that the Plan Commission felt that they wanted to add because they had concerns over the appearance.
Dave, is the one on Meadows though, do they have a solid roof? Do they have separation where, even a rear separation? Where if they change their timing, it's clearly defined as two separate units.
I've, I've seen in some cases, just a piece of white trim that goes up to just show a divider, you know, in some areas.
Off the top of my head, I know there's usually, there's two garages that stick out on the ones on Meadows on each side. I can't recall if the roof is connected or you think it is connected yet.
I'm good with conditions.
And your question is more, can you think of the...
Yeah, we enforce it.
Yeah.
So I guess, I mean...
If the, if the property owner's good with the condition, yeah. It is an enforcement.
It should be something that, that is recorded on the practice so that subsequent purchase of those acts.
We could require that, we could require that as a condition of the owner's here.
Yes.
Would you agree to have a report against the property?
Yeah, we talked to our attorney and he said that...
Can you come up to the podium and speak to Ash, I'm sorry?
Do you have a right to use some stuff like that? I didn't talk to the attorney, my wife did, but he said that there could be a covenants on the agreement that would protect, it would be on the past survey, so that would protect each side being the same. And we could write that in. What he meant, I don't, don't know.
And I'll, I'll try to explain it very briefly, but that just means that there's a document that's recorded to ensure in perpetuity that this is what goes on forever.
Right.
I think that's fair. I don't know if there's a motion and a second made with regard to this, but if you want to add that condition, would you be amenable?
It's just discussion, we'll bring it back.
Oh, it's just discussion? I'm still the new guy, thank you. Yeah, we'd be open to that, okay.
So we'll just ask the, the attorney to drop that language and then we'll add it for, to bring back with our approval.
Any other questions, discussion? Thank you. Next meeting, it'll be back on our agenda for approval next meeting.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Which is the eighteenth of March. Okay. Next, priority capital projects list. Is this Matt or is this Scott?
A little bit of both.
Okay. Whoever wants to go first, God, I guess you all have your own authority, so.
Absolutely. Thank you. So this is a subject we do on an annual basis as part of the budget process. Want to thank department heads for their contributions and the information that they brought to update the, the capital projects list. Again, we, we look at the projects that have been out there. Some of these we've known about for quite a while and need to do. So we've updated the costs where applicable and updated some of the information. An example would be some additional information on the forty-seven widening. We have better costs now that we've moved to start looking at the chart bringing a high dot on that project specifically. For the tall police department, of course, the police department, we now have better estimates that we've been gave according to Clark and moving to be fine design case. So we wanted to list that out as best we could and always keep this document as up to date as possible.
Okay. Any questions on this topic? So my first question, do you have copies of this? I mean, I know this is our, the board is discussing, discussing it, but we usually go, and I know we usually talk about this and then we go Springfield in April, in April, but do we have the staff in the cream box?
I have clean copies in my bag.
That's all I wanted to know. That's all I wanted to know. Okay. Any discussion on the items? Obviously, we tried to go Springfield with some low hanging fruit and short dollar amounts, so, you know, it looks like the, if somebody says they have a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars, what we have, that kind of happens a little bit communicable. And that's how that crosswalk is happening. So it's nice to have some small projects here, all the way up to the three hundred and seventy million metro station. That will likely remain on our capital projects list for some time.
What about adding the Galena Boulevard widening, the sort of conditioning of doing the engineering to get Galena widened with the increase in traffic?
Is that even on the state's radar? Is that even on the state's radar?
I haven't seen it.
No, I've asked, I know we put it on our our list, that that we can start doing something with quite the traffic studies or something, but.
Why don't we do this, trustee Nichols, we we will be down tomorrow, on Thursday morning, we have IDAT meetings, uh we will, I will specifically inquire, Scott, we'll specifically inquire this IDAT on this roadway and what their intentions are, and we'll go from there. I certainly don't want to spend money on a project that's on the roadway there, so if it's on there, then then we should add it to our list.
We might even do some traffic studies just to prove the necessity, but yeah, it seems like IDOT likes simple projects like widening Gleana versus widening Route forty-seven that's much more complicated, so this might be a good one to kick off in.
Any other questions or discussions on on the list? Hearing that, I'm going. Up next, the twenty-six through thirty capital improvement program. Is that a map?
Yes.
That's a map, thank you.
All right, so this is starting on page twenty-four. Um so each year, uh we look at the CIP and we will be updating this with the budget process. Um so we're gonna go through the changes that were made from last year. Um so at the bottom of page twenty-four, we currently, we discussed the village rebrand, but nothing is happening in this fiscal year, so those funds are just simply moving in year, um but they're not being, they're not being spent, they're just moving until next fiscal year. Police department was upgraded, I know we have talked about the five point four, now that has, the five point four is the construction cost, we have an additional hundred and fifty thousand of those up in the budget for the park resurfacing, so that's where the five point five comes from. Um but the five point four is a pretty well-known number based on approval for the architecture. Uh we updated the body worn camera cost, um we are going to be getting a contract on that, um so that's just updating it for a five-year plan that we will get for body worn cameras, tasers, and auto tagging and so forth. Under the transportation items, uh we updated all the animal road programs, um numbers, we will look back during the budget as well. We also added for STP projects that have been added in the last year that the village board has approved, so those are all added, that Wheeler Road from Esker to Dugan, Merrill Road list of Wheatfield, Wheeler Road from Esker to forty-seven, and Dugan from Wheeler to Fasing, um which are the south village limits. Uh we did update the costs based on uh costs from HR Green on thirty municipal crosswalk budget, um that is still waiting for IDOT approval. And then also updating the Park Avenue intersection improvement cost, because at the time it was budgeted at an intersection um for improvements, now it's just a right end with no crosstraffic. So that's the cost from HR Green for that as well, which we're currently in the process of engineering as well. Uh for the water and wastewater, um well nine was moved again from twenty-five into twenty-six. Um well eleven, that was moved up from twenty-nine to this current year, that was the one that is currently underway. Forty-seven relocation, the construction has been moved from next fiscal year to twenty-seven. That's an estimate based on bidding from the state, and also this project is not paid directly by the village, it's paid when the state builds us, so that's usually a pretty decent lag of time, so um even with the bidding happening in the end of twenty-five, we don't see any of that construction cost coming back to the village by the end of April, so that's being pushed. And then we added four fifty-five armor solar field, that was added to the CFP, uh simply because the incentives will be coming in the near future, even though we've already expended the cost. Those are the changes that were made from the previous year.
Any questions?
I have a quick question on the cost for the police department. Did, have we taken in account or has according to parking, has accounted potential effects because of tariffs? Increased cost in construction?
I don't believe they did, they took their, they took their big numbers from a project they did in December.
Previously, so I'm just saying this may go up significantly, and maybe we want to have kind of a plan if that happens.
I would like to know how, I I mean, yes, we should probably should increase it, I I agree. I don't know what that number is. I don't know, according to you, what that number will be, but if we feel comfortable putting it a percent in, I I'm comfortable putting that age.
Yeah, I don't know what it is, but I know we get a lot of our building, uh our our structural wood comes from Canada. Although they don't usually use, they don't, they're most likely to be using metal studs and such, and not wood as much, but there's a lot of material that is not made in the USA that you use in construction.
So I think what we'll do is before we approve this with the budget on the fifteenth of April, I chief committee will report again before then, I would assume, or if we can, and see what their thoughts on, based on material usage, what could be affected by tariffs.
I just want to have a plan, I don't want to suddenly get stuck with, oh my gosh, now it's, you know, so much more and we can't afford it, and I just want to, I'd like to see a little contingency, a little bit, okay, well, if this happens, we're prepared this way.
I think we don't have to follow up with this, if you can afford it, the side note to that is we might make decisions that, you know, to scale it back.
Right, right.
So we'll have to, we'll cross that bridge, but if there's a way for you to talk about a little additional reserve with him and according to the part, based on the conversation, we can do that too before the budget's finalized.
We're trying to meet before this and coming back for approval, just to have an update at least.
I mean, I, we absolutely need to do the police thing, I just want to make sure we're, we're looking at all all possible.
Like the Toronto floor is probably definitely.
It's out. So there you go.
Yeah, we will look into that.
I have a question for Brad. So the, I saw an article recently that said that the Lurkville has come to agreement on maintenance of some of the intersections on forty-seven in Lurkville, that that was the green light to proceed, but my understanding was that the railroad was now holding up?
That is our delay still. They still haven't finalized all their stuff with the railway hammer. Hearing status or anything with them coming up, just one, I think?
Actually, we don't, we're not on green light yet, we still have to do that.
I would say we're a ways out yet.
Initially, the, so the main goal leg of the forty-seven widening is District Three, um and they will be working together, but it doesn't mean that they couldn't start earlier than District One necessarily, from my understanding, because there's kind of the, the county line is the difference between District One and District Three, so if they're able to solve their, some of their railroad other issues earlier, they may, they may start before we get going.
If I just three results, just Brad.
I've never really seen the plans off of the county line. There's none to us, there's none.
We've been working with, engineering District One the entire time for our length.
I have the same question.
Yeah, I remember me, District Three, we just.
Okay, any other questions? Thank you. All right, Matt, twenty-five, twenty-six, budget workshop number two.
All right, um so this budget workshop will cover all the other funds as we covered in the last meeting. Again, I will not go into detail unless there are questions on the projections for this current year, um but I will focus on the next year budget, so starting on page sixty-two of your packet, uh we're gonna start with general capital projects. So the page sixty-two starts with the current year projections and items, moving on to sixty-three and the next year's. The revenues, uh the real adjustment is that there is currently projected for the twenty-thousand dollar surplus being transferred over to that fund, we're bringing that back down to two hundred, that'll be annually done. Uh but there is an increase in capital improvement fees based on home loss in direction at the seventy-five residential homes. Um and then getting into the expenditures, so as we discussed on the capital improvement, we're moving the rebranding from this year to next year's budget, uh and then the rental lease expense, um so this is new. One is the the current lease we have for the finance and admin offices. Uh in addition, we had to plug in a hundred thousand dollars, uh is our plug number, because we are going to have to relocate the current lease permit at some point during construction. Uh we are in the process of doing a site selection with chief and Michael and Scott, but this is just a plug number and that will be brought back to the board for more discussion of potential options for that relocation.
Matt, is the rental lease expense, is that split or is that the whole?
That's the full for.
Yes.
Um so then moving into police department, um so we have architectural services, which is the remaining contract on that, um for according to Clark on that, building improvements, uh that's at four point two million based on the construction timeline that we received that they're gonna finish somewhere in September, August, September of twenty-six. That, we're pushing fifteen percent of construction cost into that next fiscal year, so this is eighty-five percent, we don't know what the construction cost will be, but that is going to split over two years, um just based on strict timelines of their construction.
And that long potentially could help with the tariff issue too.
Correct, yeah, so if, I'll get to it, but if you kind of want to pull out page seventy-seven of the packet, that's gonna go through the capital funds kind of snapshot to show you the breakdown of the cost split up over the years and shows you that we we can't kind of fund over a few years, so that we do have additional funds coming in that can um help with the tariffs also. So that that kind of helps, I know it's, I know it's small, but um it kind of gives you an idea of splitting those costs over the years based on just construction timelines. We did also include in that ninety-five hundred dollars, which was from decline, and that is um one hundred hours of just IT services. Our server and everything is held here at the police department for the village, so we're gonna have to relocate to that wherever we go and then also bring it back when it's back, so it's at a hundred hours, we don't know what the actual is, but um when we buy up the bulk from our consultant, they give a discounted rate, so we are putting that in the budget to buy a a discounted rate for the entirety of the project.
Does that cover the rollover from month to month, will be a rollover hour?
So this is an addition to that.
Okay, so that's, so anything that's rollover right now?
Could have additional offers, yes, but this is just a strict full hour because we know that that project will take a lot of hours.
It's a big project.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah. Um and then getting into vehicles for them, uh there's just two being replaced, this twenty-nineteen Chevy Topo and twenty-twenty. Um one is going to be the WHP car, and the other is the replacement of the protective And then interfund transfer, this is for the twenty thirteen Aon, and this is the final year for that transfer. Um that is also partially paid by the non-humeral sales tax, which we talked about, that'll also expire. Those two combined, that bond, final bond payment is in December of twenty.
And what's that bonding amount?
Somewhere over six hundred thousand. Um so then Public Works, there is a new expense that has been added here, um probably since I've been here, um as a finance director, it's been requested or in the capital to replace the roof at Public Works. Um so that's just being added into capital for the general capital projects and also the water split at a hundred thousand each, so two hundred thousand total. Um and while we're funding that, it's the capital fees from the residential homes, that is a perfect example of what those fees should be utilized for, is the capital of the village that is needed for that. So that is being added into this budget, and then the only vehicle currently to be replaced is a two thousand and six bucket truck at about a hundred and sixty-six thousand Any question on the capital fund or the the kind of snapshot of the capital fund?
Thank you.
Uh next fund we're gonna talk about is is TIF one, not a lot is going to happen in this one, we have allocated the funds for Westy Road that the village board has approved, uh we've also allocated the remaining funds that have been designated for the developments on US thirty that we have earmarked, we don't know if it will happen in this fiscal year, but they are in the budget. And also, um the other is, any property tax collected has been expensed as a surplus, so those are in and in the out for the year because this will be the final year of the tax collection, and then it will be um released back to taxing districts with tax year twenty TIF two, um there is not really much happening at the current moment in here, um there is pretty much all the expenses for cat and type work for TIF, whether it's the the membership to ITIA, um audit opinions, legal opinions for them, have been moved over to this TIF since we are terminating TIF one. Um and then um the potential appraisal that's been in here for the last three or four years of the property within TIF owned by the village, but that is often used, um those are the really only expenses within this TIF. Fund thirty-four is our new TIF three fund, not much happening, we do have just some expense in there for legal that's been, that will be showing on our audit as a due to whatsoever, but if there's funds in those TIFs, it will pay back the general fund for Uh next fund is capital infrastructure fund on thirty-five. Again, if you want to go page seventy-eight though, that is a um breakdown of the infrastructure fund that you will be going through. So starting at the bottom of page sixty-five, uh there is no proposed increase or change in the road maintenance fee, um that has been the same since fiscal year twenty. As we go through, the revenues are gonna be budgeted higher, um and that is due to grants actually being anticipated to be received hopefully, and also an increase in road impact fees due to the seventy-five residential homes. Um so you can see the list of the grants that we are anticipating, um the DCO one we have received already, we're just looking for the project to move forward, same with ITAP for the bridge, sidewalks, um Bliss and Road, Bliss and forty-seven is back to the state billing us, we still haven't received that, even though that project's been done for two years, we still haven't received our final bill from the state, so that means we cannot bill the county for their. Uh the rest are STP for Norris Main Street are currently ongoing, same with Wheeler and On to page sixty-six, um so at the top, we are gonna kind of talk about the road program, which is also page seventy-nine, you will see the road program in there, again, I know it's small, I apologize. But in the current coming up twenty twenty-five road program, which is fiscal year twenty-five, twenty-six, um you will see all of the projects that we have done. Now, what we have half looked at is funding the road program over a five-year plan without any additional revenues besides MFT maintenance and non-humeral.
Matt, are the the ones that you have in there for projects that are completed, is that just retainage or?
In which ones?
Like Main Street?
In, for like fiscal year twenty-five, twenty-six, yeah. It's just, it's just all over retainage and or construction engineering, the finals when they're actually done with all the financials.
Okay, thank you.
So as you can see with this five-year program, we do, we are able to fund these, the road program, um there has been a slight change from the last time we did have, by adding the STP for Wheeler Road and Dugan Road now. Those projected construction costs were totally about two point eight million dollars. Now, the village staff actually do recommend leaving those projects, and even though they are new, strictly for the fact that those are potentially funded through a grant from STP from KCOM. Now, they match to a million dollars per project, so those two projects adding in had to kind of shift around the projects that we had built in. Really, all it did was it moved Black Walnut Trails one year and pushed Anna for one more year. So that was the only change that had to be made to make the road program fund itself completely still, while continuing to to utilize those two, potential two million dollars in grants. in grants.
This would be good, we're going to dip below.
Once we, if we didn't add in the two STP new projects that the board approved, we would have been okay, but those two new projects added about eight hundred thousand dollars of village costs. So to be able to fund those over the five years, we had to just push a couple of the projects and talking with Brad that those were not issues to push them over here. So that, that is the biggest change on here. We also discussed, because we're going to start seeing some increase in residential permits with road impact fees, do we add that to our road program? We went back and forth on that and we decided against that, strictly for the fact that we know that there are going to be projects or items that the board would like to address or use these funds for, and there's no other funding source for them if we take all of our income and put it towards the road program. So we, we said and decided to leave those alone, and that, that is what's building in there to do sidewalk programs or the parking lots and stuff that we have had in here. So there was discussion on that as, as we're seeing an increase in those impact fee collections, but we decided to leave that alone because that will leave the board the ability to do other things outside of a road program.
But just to address to the STP, while we moved that and moved up in engineering, they placed two, roughly two million dollars on those grants. So if we didn't move it after addition to this a little bit more for that need, you'd be losing two million dollars.
That's correct, yes. So is there any questions on the road program?
No, thank you, Matt.
So then getting into the bottom of page sixty-six, it talks about all those other infrastructure projects that we were just talking about having funding for, and that's usually relating to grant matches, so sidewalk programs, Park and Forty-seven, municipal crosswalks, some bridge repairs, sidewalk program, ADA self-compliance. So one thing that is not in here that we've had discussions about and President Conan has brought up is updating the transportation plan for the village. We did not include it in this year, and we just strictly do the fact that we do have a lot of ongoing projects that we are funding currently. The estimated cost we've received from EDI right now, which doesn't have a proposal, but it is about a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars to update that transportation plan. It's been most twenty years probably since it's been updated, so currently it's not in here. We can receive, get a proposal if the board does want to go in that direction, but that's the only thing that we've brought up that is not currently in our budget now.
So our portion is what you're saying? Or no, the total project will be under twenty-five thousand?
To update the transportation plan.
Right, but if we put it on our capital projects list, potentially for grant opportunity?
We could try, yes. We know that we've talked, that CMAP is eating away from that type of transportation plan, but we could try to get grants for it. But this is how much the total cost would be if the village wanted to look for that.
Well, we're getting to the point, I mean, we've got developers looking at roadways that at this point, I don't know if they're ever going to happen, right? So we really do need to take a fresh look at that. The last time it was done was in two thousand and five?
I think it was two thousand and five, yes.
It's not in this budget, but for future discussion?
Yes, that's correct, that's the only thing. So as we go through, you can see all these other expenses. There is, as we discussed, we have lobbyists in this current year budget, we did not do anything with it, so that is being pushed into this year's budget and split between road and water, mainly due to the projects that are going to be utilizing lobbyists are the road, infrastructure and water, so that is in here. And then the next one to discuss, Brian is here to talk about, is if you remember, so it is going to be page seventy-two of your packet. At least six months before this current year, we talked about this ASE control data, and it was at that time told, just bring it back during the budget discussion. So Brian is here to talk and answer anything that has happened.
Mr. Shiger, will you come on up?
Feeling real bad that I emailed stuff to Tracy late this afternoon to be added in case anybody needs to see the additional information on that. What I'm proposing is something similar that I did when I was with the City of Geneva back in twenty seventeen. You can go on their webpage and look up their control point map that they have on their website, and what this does and establishes a firm datum for all future developments, any project going on in the city, those engineers and surveyors will be using these control points that everybody's working off the same datum. What it amounts to is the surveyors will take sections of stainless steel rod and they'll drive them into the ground until they can't drive them any further. They cover them up with a plastic pipe liner with a hatch on it, and anytime a development or engineer is proposing a project in town, they can go to one of these control points, lift the cap, shoot the elevation of that steel rod that's buried in the ground, and then everybody's working off the same datum. What we currently have is a series of benchmarks. It's some old technology, surveyors would like etch an X in a bolt on top of a hybrid, or they'll drive a railroad spike into a tunnel phone pole, or they'll cut an X on top of the curb. And the problem with that is that sometimes curbs get bumped, hybrids get bumped. If you do any maintenance on the hybrid, that changes what the elevation is of that, what that X is cut into the bolt. So it's not a good system of everybody being on the same datum, and we see that sometimes whenever two projects try and meet if they're using different benchmarks. Sometimes the information doesn't correspond very well when those projects come in. So that's what I'm proposing, is that we spend this money to install these control points. They would be spread around the community so that wherever the projects are going on, they all kind of have equal access to some control points that engineers and surveyors can use.
And is it something that you would expand on in the future? Is that the idea, or this is enough, the control points that they're, that they're planning in this project can be enough?
If you wanted to, you could certainly add more control points. Right now, what we're proposing, I believe, is a half dozen of these that will be spread out throughout the community.
Does the village plan on doing a GIS program?
You'd work on this.
That would be integral, having a good GIS, be having these control points that everybody could use.
Any other thoughts?
So we're just, what I'm seeing is that there's four, five of them worth to do. How are they set? Are they set based on system book?
We would work with the surveyors depending on where we foresee developments going on, and we would select spots that would have good public access to it. We wouldn't put these in somebody's backyard. It would have to be somewhere that the public and surveyors and engineers could have access to them.
Isn't it the purple spots in here?
Yeah.
Village-owned property or close to it?
Those are good sites.
You might want to add one there instead of one that shouldn't, just because of all the potential development.
Could the ones going up north be considered part of the development cost for what's going on in the TIF once they start grading around? Because it's going to be used for reference of what they're going to be doing, I'm guessing for grading and pipes and that sort of stuff. Look, I'm an engineer, I understand the value of this, but selling fifty thousand dollars to the village for driving five steel rods into the ground is, that's the type of thing that people start ringing phones, phones over around an election.
I think you're not having one.
I'm looking out for you guys, right? Yeah, so I'm just, I'm just, I see why it's necessary, right? Like I said, I'm an engineer, these reference points are critical in doing this sort of stuff and making, especially these adjoining projects that are going to be going on with IDOT and everything else, you know, and Fox Metro and running pipes and all that other stuff. Got to know where you're at in space, but look, if we can offload some of those costs onto some of the other programs, maybe get some reversal for something like that, I think that may be the best way to go about it.
Is this something we could help?
Certainly could if you wanted to. I, I don't know that that's a service that every surveyor offers. This is some high-precision work.
And none of the other municipalities have any of these already nearby? The township doesn't, the county doesn't?
Not to my knowledge.
We should probably verify that just to make sure we're not... I think the counties already have one.
I'm sure they have, but we've been operating by.
Okay.
The X on fire, my turn.
We, we can check with the county, but that's not something typical, the county would do if it's developed like, like this, they would, they would do that to the cities.
There was an issue a number of years ago at the, for that clinic, the gas station, and then the building next door, this no over there, was the chiropractor. And there's, their deeds started from two different points, so there was like two-foot gap and a two-foot overlap in the legal description, so they had to do a bunch of hard clean deeds to define it. Now, I understand that with the digital GPS, the three Ds, it's much more precise than
I have a question too, just, so as it currently stands, are, is this saving by, by spending this money, is this saving the village any money?
It saves us in the long run because any projects that get built now will all be on the same datum, and there won't be those errors that you come into when, when projects don't line up accordingly, or if there's an error made using old benchmarks.
So you're, so would they go out, they're staking these places, if there's a mistake, we're catching them, or that's our job is to catch them, when we catch those mistakes on the surveys, you're saying it's saving us manpower hours of locating these things to make sure they're correct, or are we saving money?
By not having to fix things that are screwed up in the future.
Yeah, when you have a bad benchmark, it causes a lot of problems, and usually, a lot of times you don't find out until you're well into the project sometimes.
Until you're pointing it up to the east, don't tell it's a bridge.
And I'm just, and those, right now, currently, if there are bad benchmarks, those are, those are our responsibility to fix, the responsibility of the survey company that's currently out there that made the mistake to begin with.
I don't even know how you go about fixing those. I mean, how do you place blame on or know how to make them accurate if you're using old technology?
So then when they fix them now, or they don't fix them, is what you're saying? They just, they stay incorrect?
Correct.
Where do we see the technology of the surveying going? You know, now they're using GPS, is that true? Always going to be, or is it, I mean, is there something that, anything new is coming that will make this obsolete in ten years?
We could, we could reach out to a surveyor if he liked a presentation on where surveying's going, I mean, it is...
GPS is only accurate plus or minus three to six feet, depending on your cloud coverage at any given point in time too, when you're talking about something down to the arc second of accuracy, I'm assuming.
These measurements are based on a minimum of thirty minutes of satellite time, and you have to have a minimum number of satellites that you can tie into the time that you're setting these.
When we're planning crop, right, just as a relative measure there, the satellite systems that tractors are connecting to, you're between six and nine satellites to resolve down to plus or minus, you know, six inches, and then there's additional corrections that go on top of that, so thirty minutes of time, that's just... Yeah, yeah, it's the level of accuracy that you need to get to know where your zero, zero, zero point is. Otherwise, I'm guessing the cost at that point in time, when you go to meet two pipes together, there's six inches, six inches apart, you're paying ten thousand dollars to just reroute stuff to give it to maintenance, I'm guessing, right? I mean, that's where the cost savings would end up. There wouldn't be the necessary reworking when a project kicks off that you may see, it may carry as a line item with an invoice that comes in that we might not even see at the board at that point in time.
I guess my question to you would be, a surveyor comes out, in normal circumstance today, they're surveying the property, is there a benefit to them in the sense that, I hate to make it sound, so it's valuable in a sense that they're using our plugs that we've put in to make their life choices easier? Is that technology something that we could pass, or is it they just, we're, we're paying this cost of fifty thousand dollars and they're using our technology and it's making their life easier? And that's just a...
Yeah, the village certainly entertains a value by having more accurate information.
Isn't this really just for like layout subdivisions? Because once everything's laid out, you're just using the high coverage of the corners considering where ours are, I don't really care how put the elevation is so much, but...
These control points are not only vertical control, it's also horizontal, it's sub-centimeter accuracy on these control points.
For the big subdivisions, you can use GPS units and set their elevations and excavators and all that, and pull right off that line, quotes about it to the developers.
Any other thoughts? It's in, it's in the budget, we could discuss it, we can leave it there, let the board sit on it.
Yeah, this is just including it in the budget, it's still a lot in the back for actual, we can do whatever.
But if you have any questions, please reach out to Brian and ask him specifically if you need more information, we'll do that as well. Thanks, Brian. All right, back to you, Matt.
All right, the final expenses within road program is still nice control, and then also the transfer for the other portion of the debt service on the twenty thirteen Aon that expires this year as well.
Where are you at, Matt?
Next fund is just debt service, and that's the transfer that we just talked about for twenty thirteen Aon. SSA ten is the area behind Jewel to be maintained. We did levy taxes this year in tax year twenty-four, collected in twenty-five, twenty-six for the maintenance of that. The business district fund is in in and out on those with the sale tax rebate on there for the fifteen years. And we have the water fund. So again, not going to cover projections. So on page sixty-eight, we're going to talk revenues. This does include a proposed one percent increase on the water rates, as we talked about with utility rate committee that is approved through them. This is the final year of that utility rate committee, so that will be happening sometime in the next, by the end of the calendar year to reconvene that. Going through expenditures, just looking at the fund wide, again, same with general fund, salaries are at the four percent for end steps for any employees, and medical is budgeted at five for next year. IMR contributions again increased seventy-eight percent. IT overall, slight decrease on that, there are no large projects in there identified outside of the capital for this building. Administration, again, we talked about the lobbyists, this was split between the capital fund and the water super fund. And then, so the biggest change right now that we made in transfer to equipment replacement is when we created the water and super capital fund, we were utilizing that as a branded fund. We had no, no money going into that fund to fund our vehicles and equipment like we do for our capital fund or our general fund. When that was created, what we did is when we purchased it out of the operating fund... When that was created, what we did is when we purchased it out of the operating fund, we then added it to our depreciation schedule. We currently are at the kind of the end of that. We have five vehicles and a handful of equipment that is left. So to try to stabilize our operating budget long-term, because that helps us stabilize and look at our water rates long-term, I look to see if we could just depreciate those remaining vehicles and equipment today over the next term of that depreciation schedule. So if it had three years, but it's on a twelve-year, I did it over fifteen years. Just so that we can afford to depreciate it today, stabilize our operating fund to stabilize water rates. And we were able to fund all of those vehicles and equipment, so there won't be the fluctuations of potentially having eight hundred thousand dollars to refund the vector when our vector... So it lets you kind of keep your operating stable, so when you're going into utility rate committee or looking at water rates, it doesn't have these big jumps and fluctuations that we were having. So that's the biggest change. As you can see, there was a pretty large increase to the transfer to the... But that is now being fully funded into the water capital fund to then stabilize our operating. Any questions?
Do we need to start pre-saving for anticipated additional equipment based on village growth with the new developments that are probably, you know, next three to five years, I'm guessing, where we're going to start seeing new addresses? So just wondering if that...
That usually comes in new. That usually comes in new and then we can start depreciating that at that time.
We can, yeah.
Yeah, but we need to make sure we had the money ahead of time, so it was already in the budget for something we need. Three years from now, we could put twenty thousand dollars a year in the bucket for it.
I laugh because Brad's on the good one. Sure, we should start saving right away. That was a great idea, Justin.
Actually, me and Brad are planned to meet because our C I P has to have a full deep dive since we created it three years ago. So we are actually, that is part of our current fiscal year discussions and we'll add what the potential growth looks like for the equipment and people. So, but yeah, so this was just to stabilize it because we do have like vectors.
Got a new sky.
Getting older and that's somewhere in the mid to ninety thousand. Debt principal, a decrease. The two thousand and three I E P A loan expired this current year. So we have just the one bond, the two thousand and seventeen refunding bond that will expire this fiscal year, twenty-eight, twenty-nine. P W administration. That decreased, we had wheel loader repairs that were completed in this fiscal year. And then there were two new items that were asked, we talked about it, being split in the general fund, which was the replacement of the washing heater and the public works since. So that's the other half of this. General equipment also decreased for wheel loader for purchases because that was approved this year. And going back to kind of the discussion we just had, specialized supplies was including three new tablets for Julie and G I S locations. And then it also goes to the next item on water operations, which we added was thirty thousand dollars in here for G I S work to improve the village's G I S system. So going back to, yes, we are looking at improving the village's G I S. Repair maintenance for buildings, overall it will decrease. While we did add a new expense to repaying well of the lemons, the building, we have decreased because we upgraded the meters at eight, well, eight, nine, and ten. Specialized supply simply increases due to increasing the need for water meters for new homes. Sewer operations decreased with the final wet lung wizard being purchased. And then again, we talked about water capital. All purchases are now going to be made on the water capital fund.
Should there not be some offsetting revenue for specialized supplies since we...
There is.
Oh.
Okay, any questions? Continue on, prompt to be one.
All right, so prompt to be one is the water sewer capital fund we just talked about. So going on to page seventy, looking at this current year, there's going to be an increase in water sewer fee capital collections due to residential permits, an increase in the transfers that we just talked about. And then a slight decrease in just the funding transfer because we shifted it from infrastructure over to the water for vehicle. And then we do anticipate the rebates coming in for the silverfield installation. Not very hopeful that we're going to be getting the tax incentive in this current fiscal year, just based on the timeline of we're still waiting for I R S approval into the registration form. So we're anticipating that happening next year as well as the continuing to get the comment, which we're waiting for an update on comment when we receive our first one that we are anticipating this year. So getting into the expenditures, you can see that these are the projects that are slated for this year. Also, page eighty is another snapshot you can look at. That's our water sewer capital, kind of funded snapshot. So projects that are currently upcoming is well-nigh, we are actually going to hopefully do them this year. And not push that one yet. And then currently, well, the maintenance was slated in our C I P. We are starting the engineering for Maple Street in New York. And we're still continuing the Illinois forty-seven utilities relocation on our portion of the engineering. Before we move on, on page eighty, this is where you're going to see how we are still very reliant on the trip tomorrow for downstate with our funds. So looking into the next few years, fiscal year twenty-seven, when we start seeing that deficit again still, and that's due to the utilities relocating and Maple Street. That brings that year to about six point eight million dollars in capital expenditures. So the need for either help downstate or the need to fund this through some type of funding source, whether it's a low-interest loan through I E P A or a volume source. But without additional help, there's going to be a need. We are going to be reviewing and I believe Scott's going to be trying to meet with I E P A while he's down there as well to talk to them about that, which project is the best use for that if we need it. Just as a last option if we don't get funding in another source, so. But once we have that secure long-term for capital, right now, we will be able to fund with current revenues. When we discuss this year with more depth on what that kind of next five years looks like, we'll be able to come back with better. That's really our focus between this fiscal year twenty-six, twenty-seven at the current moment. Again, we don't know on IDOT relocation when we're going to get billed, but we're just plugging it in that we're going to get a bill all at once, because just like Bliss, we got it at eighty percent. Even at that, that level of expense is over two million dollars.
Well, we don't expect, first of all, we don't expect a relocation to happen potentially this year, right? Correct? Right? No. So in funding year twenty-seven, we are funding, you're funding both projects in that year, correct?
Correct.
So you anticipate that twenty-six construction, it hits at twenty-six?
Which we think could bill us, because that's really the fir... I mean, I'm assuming that's the first portion of the project that they would do is relocating the utilities.
And they go on completion? You don't know?
IDOT. This may not bill on any type of... Generally, it's on completion, but like I said, Bliss and forty-seven has been completed for two years and we have yet to see a final one.
And what were your thoughts initially on the two projects? Which one had a better, being an I E P A situation? Did you have a guess that could bring them?
I didn't, but probably will be, is my guess.
And that's because of the older product.
So any questions on that or any of the items on here?
Thank you.
Yep, and then we get into, still back to page seventy. There's a new expense for financial services and that's the one-time expense that we're going to have for the consultant helping us with tax incentive. And then building improvements is the other half of the capital for the roof replacement at Oak. And that is being funded through the capital fee received from residential loans, just like it was in the capital fund. Refuse on page seventy, we are continuing to recommend a three percent increase to rates as that is what our current contract is being increased by D C trash or L R S.
What is that contract?
We just extended it for five more years.
Two years ago, maybe?
So I will do what I E P A here, waste management was still more expensive than that. So. And then the last is police pension fund. We really don't have any control over that. This is based on contribution level, which we're funding at the hundred percent employer contribution, employee contributions and investments. So it's just, we have to budget for it because it's a fiduciary fund.
Yeah, but not every municipality is funded as well as we have been. Some of you sat on that board. I greatly appreciate, behalf of our police officers, the level of support that the villages continue to be in that, in that direction.
Not everybody, municipality has a property tax loan and...
That's right.
They fund it truly out of, you know, general fund.
Yeah.
Part of the discussions tomorrow downstate, I mean, we'll be there too, right?
That's right.
You know, that's always the issue of tier-two pensions. Right now, the discussion is all about tier-two pensions and the funding for that. So we're, I would say, to your point, we're in a better position than most municipalities.
Correct, correct.
But so it's hard when you present, because we're, like I said, better than others, but there's still a funding gap there.
Oh, for sure, yes. Considering minimum, there's plus the percentage of funding than like the state statute.
Forty percent. Yeah. And so that's the final of the budget workshop. The draft resolutions are in the back for the fees, but as we discussed, and then all the financials. Any other questions, like names or...
I was telling Mark, there's nothing... What's up? Let's not print again, so we can not be your budget workshop items so that they're not getting reprinted for renewal unless there's a change on something. I don't want you to print these packets all the way.
Yeah, we won't reprint them. They'll be in the link.
Right.
But yeah, we won't reprint them.
Make your notes. I'm sorry, do anyone have any questions for, for Matt?
Thank you, Matt, for all your hard work. Matt and staff.
Thank you.
And the next workshop will be on the eighteenth. That'll be kind of a recap of any things changed. Or if you have any questions that come up between now and...
Okay. Staff, what's... Matt? That's because he's from the town of Attica. I need to start with you, but you're not from Attica.
I'm liking...
Because you were on vacation.
I'm on vacation, but I will add that I'm the primary purpose has been working with Lennar on the agreement and working through that process. I did fill in for Tanya flying commissions, that was a big one to do as well. And then preparing for the Metro West drive down tomorrow, Thursday. And the information to be able to be in part of that. Can I bring in any questions?
Any questions for Scott? Okay, there you go. Matt?
I have nothing to add.
Any questions or discussions for Matt? Dean?
I have nothing to ask.
She's been busy. Any questions specifically for Dean? Okay, Chief Ronalds?
Today was our first day that we activated the emergency warning sirens out of our own, with the multi-test. Typically, Aurora has been managing the activation force at the multi-test level just over until we're the board group, the I G A that allows Aurora to donate this island off of fifty-six and Goliath area to the village to sugar grow. Part of that also included us to fully control our own emergency warning sirens. So today, they, or earlier this week, they, the company removed it from Aurora's responsibility. So when they set it up in their dispatch center, it always set off the city of Aurora and then reactivate it for us today. So we still have the capability individually activating on non-multi-test, albeit in...
I didn't hear it.
I knew it sounded better.
Okay, good. I was like, I didn't hear it. I always hear, but I didn't.
Okay, I'll tell you at ten o'clock and then...
I had to pause my meeting that I had at home as a result of, so I knew it went off.
And then just a little bit of an update on your emergency warning sirens with us renovating this facility. We need to temporarily relocate all the equipment that goes to activate the emergency warning sirens from this building. It's going to be relocated over to Public Works, so the board meeting in April will be moving forward with the initial one, which allows us to integrate the National Weather Service that we could put in a polygon and the weather event that they can also activate based on what they're seeing come across their screen. And it won't be a set on a dish, but temporary house. The equipment public works for a little bit over a year because we're going to be out of here, but we had to pre-plan move equipment from here to Public Works and then bring it back when our project is completed. So C D, state your name, C D, Aurora report asking for support to move on with that. It's a budgeted item. So we can leave it sometime in April.
And that is important, just so they can all have direct control over that? Is that why you have to move it back? Is it not feasible to stay up at Public Works?
It's based, we're in a geographic cart, so it's not ideal. So it's a mobile cart to get to the roof equipment, so it's not a big, we're in the relocating. And the satellite itself, with Public Works getting a brand-new roof, we don't want to add additional equipment to the roof system. And it's best for us to, we have to go in and we can do perform maintenance here on it. And then we also have a remote radio that we, it stays on twenty-four seven and has to be changed out when it starts failing. So, you know, just like anything else being loved on for many years, you're not going to know unless you walk into the room and realize that radio is dead and then we're completely on being able to set the siren off. So it would be a sight and sound for us, so. It's like the old bring it back and house when it comes. It's a net of expense by the necessary.
Every time we turn the page, it's like, oh, I know there's that one. That's what happens with construction. Okay. Thanks, Chief. Any questions for Chief? I do specifically, well, we talked about roadway safety. I know you see metrics that you're working into right now. How many more days is the traffic study happening?
Two, three, six.
So it's on, is it ten days, Tim?
We do agree with running for attendance, yes.
And you did it once already?
Correct.
Because I know we had some concerns out of the neighborhood, asking, you know, what we do, and I said, we're doing traffic study, and you did it. But if you could just explain some of the interference that you're getting.
So our radars are radar technology, so it's radar radar. And what happens is sometimes you see tubes going across the roadways. We don't have that. We have other discrete devices that we put up on poles or trees and that we monitor traffic accounts, the number of cars or types of vehicles going by and speed. However, we won't get interference when we have an airport nearby because even if you're flying low and you open over the unit, over that unit, you'll see some high speeds. It's like, you know, so it'll skew the data, so we relocate it in a pointed direction to try to not capture planes leaving the area or coming in because, like I said, it messed it up, so.
A hundred and eighty mile an hour.
That's when he was getting, he was getting high speeds. It actually hurts it, isn't that what you were saying? If you get speeds that are exceeding the limit, then the recommendation will come back to increase your speed.
So, yeah, so we're going to have flying cars pretty soon.
And then Chief, the recommendation on new subdivisions like Bright Ridge and Lennar One, it's going to be started at twenty-five, which is a little easier to do than existing subdivisions, is that correct?
Correct.
Yeah, so you're going to, so Ryan and I have been working on all the plans and, and what Brad has placed in signage.
So it starts... So you start seeing it in Silver Ridge and then if that ridge gets approved, the new section of Silver Ridge, we'll see neighborhood speed sign, or neighborhood, it's going to be twenty-five miles per hour on the silver one supposed to. So, so that's going to be our, our start.
Wonderful, thank you. Any questions for Chief? Michael?
Oh, thank you. Three updates on new business openings. Cilantro is going to be opening Friday. And then in about thirty days, we'll do a full, long grand opening. You know, restaurants like to have a soft opening and then kind of work the bugs out. Definitely hiring, so if you know someone that would like to work at a restaurant, they can apply. Right Path is, I was there last week, they have built out a beautiful facility. And they're just waiting on one last thing, and that's the inspection and the state fire marshal. Hopefully that'll happen momentarily and then they'll be able to open. Again, they're going to do a formal grand opening in like thirty to sixty days. And then Rosewood Farms, which is constructing a new building, expects they have that completed in like around mid-April. And they would like to do a community open house slash grand opening for their new project. We'll be helping all three of these businesses with their, with their opening and opening. The only thing I wanted to mention, it was in my report, you know, the office market is, I guess you could describe it as fairly dead. But Gail Link, which is a KDA based IT services company, has closed down their new office space in Sugar Grove. It's a four-seventy-four division, if you're familiar with that multi-tenant building there, it's the middle unit, it's never been occupied, never been built out. We met with them a couple of times, economic, we developed staffs. And they were so confident the process will be a smooth one, they went ahead and closed down the building. Even before, usually this contingent upon a village approval, and they went ahead and closed. It's about more than four thousand square feet, we moved in a fourth of headquarters there. And that's my report.
Thanks, Michael.
Was that like on the boards?
That's what you just said to me, I don't know.
Yeah, he's good, right?
It was the duplex, I know he was just.
Oh, the real life, Brad. Have I seen the jump side of the paper? Your board report's on the backside of community development, so that's my excuse. Michael, do we have any questions for Michael? There you go. Brad, please enlighten us.
The only thing I would like to add is we have completed the combat LED streetlight for our elevator.
Really?
So all hundred volt have been installed and then we're looking through the grant process with them now to upload all the GPS locations and stuff.
Wonderful.
Should see you soon.
I think, just real quick, I'm waiting. Mixed reviews on the lights, potential. Any, any thoughts as to what that is? Is that a bluish purple light?
I don't guess.
No, at dark, you haven't seen it?
I think they had issues in Elburne with that too. And the comments that I heard were that during COVID, there was such a mad rush on getting stuff there out of, out of the lights for a long time, and so that's the product that came out. So I think it was a combination of when it was assembled and when it was purchased. Yeah, the purple ones, I think Elburne had a lot of lights up there too, like downtown Elburne was purple.
Yeah.
Just like jewel.
I think it's difficult to see at night, to be honest.
It's weird, seems a little dim.
Yeah, I mean, I, listen, we have, you know, we're worried about lighting, right? We don't want to be too bright here, but at the same time, it can just cast it weird.
Yeah, some, some of it is that, when they're moving.
Well, it's going to work for the form we're sharing because it's turned to village purple, so they're ahead of the game.
To that point, with the night sky ordinance in Canlin, Graceville seems very bright.
That's it?
Yeah, things we can do.
So if they're existing and they meet our requirements now, we probably can't do anything with them to adhere to the night sky. Can they go to all Graceville's picture? Okay, thank you. Trustee reports.
I have a question.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's why Brad, Brian. What kind of, what kind of things should we be thinking about for traffic calming, speed calming when it comes to new developments?
Certainly initiative with Chief's charge of establishing a point line on our residential speed limits. We've already reduced the roadway width, so that narrowing the roadway up slowed down the traffic as well. We've allowed sixty-foot rightways and twenty-eight-foot back-to-back roads now with parking only on the side, obstacle watering where the highways are at. We can continue to look at these developments as they come through and try and anticipate where we see problems are going to happen. If you have anything else you want to pursue, we'll look into it.
I guess the comment then on some of the residents that I heard was they wanted wider road because it's a throughway. And the suggestion from, it sounds like from you is you want a narrow road so that they slow down and you don't have high speeds coming through there. Am I interpreting them correctly?
So wider roads do let people speed more than what you would normally see. So a lot of initiatives like over in Europe, they will put special pavement markings on the roadway to give the illusion where a roadway is an airway and that slows people down. You can paint in fake speed bumps or speed tables and just the, people seeing that pavement makes them slow down. Certainly if you have a car parked on one side and it narrows the road down even further, that, that slows people down as well.
One of the challenges that I had reducing the speed limit though, people are speeding at thirty miles an hour, they're going to speed at twenty-five. It's just what can potentially raise the ticket if they're speeding more as far as the deterrent. I think other than that, you're talking about, and I know it's not a topic for discussion, but I think it's just other sort of means I think might be considered. I think the roundabout, which I know it's tough, you can't go back in and rebuild a roundabout necessarily, I mean, those intersections, but that's an interesting thought. That was the one that seemed probably, you can put stop, stop signs, but people who blow those just like, if they're, if they're willing to speed, they're going to, they're going to choose stop sign. It just gives, you know, higher opportunities for going to actually, you know, put an officer there in the morning to just get more tickets that might demotivate people from speeding through there. That road's drag, drags for, for sure, it's a straight shot.
I mean, subdivision with a straight shot is, I was walking my dog's fifty mile an hour pickup truck driving down Weefield. It's just, if there's nothing, if there's no obstacle in the way.
That's right.
Then you know, you'll sometimes feel how fast you're going. So I think it's a hundred percent support the initiative being twenty-five in half a subdivision.
Is there enough space to put a median in that street?
There's, there's, it's a wide road, but I don't.
I'm just trying to think of other ways of.
I don't think Brad wants to add any more construction material that has to be replaced or repaired or a plow truck that's going to hit it by, by chance, but. Yeah, hopefully with the new development, there's a lot of, you know, through, through way, but right now it's not, so that's what happens. Okay. Trustee reports. Trustee Michael.
Food pantry is open at their new location behind the Perry House and it was nicely done. They offer services on Thursday night and then, good luck to the Canlin Boys' basketball team that's in semi, sectional finals tomorrow.
Trustee Michael's just eligibility to go to that food pantry, do you know anything about that?
I don't.
Okay.
It's open in the Canlin area and all as well. The whole Canlin school, like anybody that lives within the Canlin school district is.
Okay.
And it's beyond that too, they sort of.
The job market, the economy stuff is changing really quickly. I'm hearing a lot of anecdotal stories that, you know, these job numbers that we're seeing are two months behind than really where things are at right, right now.
So. So I don't know if they reach out to people, I don't know where they get all, sometimes people go there to register, but like there have been other times, like I deliver a bunch of stuff out to Big Rock and they're like, look, this guy's going to say no. Make, just make sure to leave it.
Okay.
So they, there, people do go to them and they do have ways of finding out who's, who's in need.
Why you had a conversation with someone in the neighborhood that you wouldn't think would be going through some food anxiety with, but, you know, people get that with hard terms, it's temporary, hopefully, but.
Food pantry does a lot of the, I know my kids have spent many hours volunteering there, volunteered there, do a fantastic job there.
Yeah, okay. Thanks for sharing that, Trustee Michael.
Sure.
Trustee White.
Nothing?
Thank you. Trustee Wendy.
I attended the library board meeting last Wednesday, so they're having, it's incredible how much the increase in visits they're having. Which tells you you have more hours. They're fine free now, and I can go on their website, there'll be information on that. They have so many different things going on. They also will be having early going, I believe, March seventeenth through the twenty-first and the twenty-fourth through the twenty-seventh, so. I also, twenty-second, I was at Bliss Woods doing a cleanup, very cold. Started out, it was very sunny, it was seventeen when we were out, on the first way out there. But Mario puts us all to shame on the, the trees. And I know there were some comments about what, on social media, what's going on, why are we cutting stuff down? It's invasive species that we're cutting down and clearing, so all done properly.
It allows for new tree.
It allows for the proper things and the native things to come up, so yeah. A lot of, is it buckthorn and honeysuckle, those are coming down.
There were issues out there with termites, right? That we had a tree fall on a car on Bliss Road, I don't know how many years ago that was, but like there was, there were like really bad termites out in the woods. Is that all fixed or is that part of what's coming down, or is it just invasive species?
All that I've done on this once-a-month Saturdays is the invasive species where we, we cut it and pull it and then it's a patchy branch, so. I just, I'm usually the one who pulls the stuff and stacking it up and then.
Mary's the one putting the big one.
She is, it's, it's pretty intimidating, she's carrying big branches and, you know, and it's, it's awesome.
Does anyone say anything? Trustee here.
Uh, yeah, as Trustee Michael said, the boys' sectional semifinals tomorrow night, finals, hopefully they're going to make it. I think they're playing Rockford tomorrow at seven and hopefully get to that finals on Friday. Also, our girls' wrestling team were conference champs and took third in state last weekend. And our Sugar Grove resident, Angelina Goaches, also took, repeated as a state champion, thirty-sixth in our, so we're going to have to update that sign. State champion.
We're already on.
Already spoke with her as a coach. All right, awesome, awesome. That's all I got.
Yeah, that's exciting. Way to celebrate our, our residents. Trustee Bonnie.
I just want to kind of bring back up the safety of what's reporting. I think that's, I want to thank everybody that came out tonight to bring that up. And I also want to say my piece on it, just I wholeheartedly agree that we need to look as hard as possible at taking care of those residents there and their safety concerns, so. As nice as it is to put the twenty-five mile an hour sign in, that's only as good as it's enforced. So I really would like to make sure that we spend time, staff spends a lot of time working on that, looking at that for those residents. Be able to, and then the other thing was I had, I had some, a couple of people approached me about some litigation that they read about in the news and, or read about, but their question was about withholding some, some impact fees to pay for litigation. Is that something we can talk about next time or maybe in a closed session, just so I can get some answers, hand back out to the response about that?
So we can talk about it in open session, but not in executive session, because I think, are you referring to the, the fees that we did last meeting? Which is our grand cash?
No, withholding some, I think the school impact fees was brought up. If we had a possibility of withholding tho, those impact fees to pay for some litigation that could possibly be occurring.
Okay.
I don't have the answer to that, so I would like to just get the answer to them.
What I would suggest is that you have a conversation. Yeah, we'll have, we'll have a conversation about it. I will tell you, all of our fees are, they are optional by the village, so they are, they are dealt here by the village board. And any legal fees that we might incur, I'm assuming you're referring to the school district?
I believe so, they aren't necessarily fully upfront about it, I'm just, I'm assuming that's what it was, but I figured if I asked a question, I could get some answer that I could ask them for the questions once I provided the information back.
If it's specific to the school district, then those legal fees are covered by the developer. So we would, we as a village would not be incurring those fees.
Thank you.
Trustee Showmas.
Nothing in particular above and beyond what we've already discussed. I had a conversation with a, a business owner that I'm going to talk to Chief about at the end of the meeting or maybe at the break before we're going to close session here. That's, yeah. Just concern that was, that was raised without going into specifics, so.
Okay, thank you. President's report, this past week, I conducted two different time spots for communities to develop. Small group turnout, but it was a nice opportunity to ask questions and we have questions answered. Matt was, was with me and Chief was there for a little. Also, Metro West Networking Dinner, which we do quarterly, that happened on Thursday, the twenty-seventh, in Matavia this time. And the Drive-Down tomorrow, which we normally do in conjunction with ILL Drive-Down. What's nice about this one is the feedback has been over the years and it becomes such a cluster of people that are down there that we're going down early this year and we're going down with just our COGS. So we should have a little bit more individualized time with our legislators when we're meeting with them. So I'm looking forward to this format and good feedback hopefully will come to the COGS as we move forward. But Scott and I will be there, I think Jimmy will be down there, he represents multiple communities that we'll be down with. So looking forward to that, so that's all I have at the moment for President's Report. We do have a need to go to executive session, so we will not, we have no action I've been scheduled for the executive session, so I would ask for a motion to move to executive session to discuss probable or imminent litigation and to adjourn from there.
Add a date, second.
The first time, Trustee Lee was here, and the second, Trustee Showmas. Roll copy.
Trustee Aaron.
Aye.
Trustee Showmas.
Aye.
Trustee Michaels.
Aye.
Trustee White.
Aye.
Trustee Wendy.
Aye.
Trustee Vaughn.
Thank you.